We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, we got one there, too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands man one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Doug.
Bossy?
Here.
Base?
Here.
Comfort?
Here.
Derland?
Here.
Ferguson absent. Natchensky?
Here.
Penella?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Stockdale?
Here.
Eight present.
Approval of the minutes, the minutes of the regular meeting held March 24th, 2020 are attached, and the secretary recommends that these minutes be approved, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay. We have no student reports. Mrs. Cross, do you have anything you want to add to this morning, this evening?
I just would like to say thank you to all the administrators for all their hard work these last two weeks in getting our education plan together, and a special thank you to Lance for his work getting our online equipment ready for everything that's coming down the pike. It's been a lot of work, and so everybody's been trying to do what's right for our kids and our families in this crazy time. So, thank you, and thank you to the board for coming together tonight for this special meeting to get things approved. I appreciate it, so, thank you.
Mr. Mavis, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
I think he's in his office watching this streaming, making sure it all goes right.
That, okay. So, Linder?
Nothing to add.
Okay. We'll go to public input.
We have one public input from Crystal McCusker. It's a list of questions, most of which were answered at the last board meeting, but we will answer her by email.
Okay, perfect. We will have an executive session at the end for a contractual matter. Finance, Mr. Blazi?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
No problem.
Finance, first order is administration recommends approval of the KG Service Agreement to provide services and support for 20 wireless routers. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions or discussion?
Can, yes, can some background be given for those who are tuned into this? What, what and where and how the 20 wireless routers will be and what they can do?
Well, Mr. Mavis is the one who is going to help us with the online part of our educational plan, but as you know, our county has some areas that do not have internet service, don't have the capability to have internet service, and in fact, some have internet service, but it's very sporadic. So, our hope is if there are any teachers, we found that there are two teachers that have very sporadic, and then if there are any families that a router, or, excuse me, a hotspot could help with their service, that we could help with purchasing these hotspots, putting them in certain areas, either to, if it gets to the point, they could drive to a certain area or come to a certain area, which we hope that isn't the, what it comes down to, but if we could put a hotspot in an area, it would help increase the capability of getting internet into their homes. So, by purchasing 20 of them for a one-year service agreement, it would help in that area.
Thank you.
And then, oh, you're welcome. And then our hope is when this pandemic is over, we could put them in our library and you could sign them out, and it would still help our families. When school is in session, we will keep it for one year, and then they can sign them out, like we have sign-outs for continuous help to our families and to our students.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Bossy?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Natchensky?
Yes.
Penella?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stockdale?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
All right, second item, bear with me for a minute, I gotta get back to my agenda. Second item is administration recommends approval of the government software services for the 2021 tax year duplicate production. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just say something. Usually, we approve this in April so that we can have the agreement in place when we have to send those, the assessment office provides us the tax data, we send it off for our books, so we have it prior to the beginning of the next year on July 1st. So, just in case we can't meet between here and now, there's no harm in having this agreement in place, so I can just submit it to them, so we don't miss that deadline between the tax office and having these duplicates produced.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Roll call, please.
Chase?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Natchensky?
Yes.
Penella?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stockdale?
Yes.
Bossy?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
That's all for finance.
Thank you. Athletics and health, Mr. Stockdale?
We have nothing for athletics and health at this time.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Chase?
We have nothing for buildings and grounds tonight.
Okay. Curriculum and student activities, Mrs. Bella?
We have nothing on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Personnel, Mr. Chase?
Item A, administration recommends approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Sullivan County Education Association for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I don't understand item number four. Patty, could you read that?
Yes. That no employee shall expose a personal phone number to stay in contact with their students.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? They don't want their phone number, their personal phone number, known. There's some teachers that don't want their personal number known by their students. So, if, what we have asked is that, I believe this memorandum came out even before a directive was given, that we ask that they make personal contact daily with their kids, or throughout the week with their kids, just to touch base, to make sure they're doing their work, and just to say hello and make that contact, either via email or a personal phone call. And they, in this memorandum, it's saying they don't want them to have their personal phone call. So, there's ways, like a scrambling, it says in here, a scrambling program. If you hit star 67, it blocks your personal phone number from the other end. So, that's what they're saying, is just if there's no way of doing that, they don't want to have to give their personal phone number. So, we've come up with ways. They can, but they don't have to. Yeah, like, you know, if one teacher doesn't mind, that's okay, but there has to be a mechanism, and we can't force them, and I'm okay with that, but there is a way you can do a star 67, and that won't give your phone number away.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
And I understand that some people just don't want to give their personal phone number, and that's okay. So, I'm all right with that, but, you know, sometimes the teacher is their connection, and sometimes they are someone that can talk them through some things, and so I think that personal connection is very important, and...
So do I, that's why I wondered. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Comfort?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Natchensky?
Yes.
Penella?
Yes.
Phillips? Stockdale?
Yes.
Bossy?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And that is all for personnel.
Thank you. Policy and procedure, administration recommends the revision of policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communications, affecting virtual attendance during extreme situations, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Derland?
Yes.
Natchensky?
Yes.
Penella?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stockdale?
Yes.
Bossy?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Transportation, Mr. Chase, do you want to do that one?
Yes, I will. Item A, administration recommends payment to transportation contractor as reflected in the payment memo, recommendation of payment to transportation contractors during the COVID-19 crisis, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Natchensky?
Yes.
Penella?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stockdale?
Yes.
Bossy?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay.
That is all for transportation.
Thank you. Board reports, Mr. Stockdale?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Blazi?
The only thing I wanted to say is that I do want to encourage people to go out with the food service that's available for the kids. I know some families that did go take advantage of that, and I don't think that many families currently are taking advantage of it based on the numbers that we saw, but I'm just throwing it out there, it's a great thing, and in this time, especially with all the preparation that's going into that, that people should go out and take advantage of that, for sure.
Yeah, if I can add, there was a memo that came out today from USDA, or the end of day yesterday, that some of the sites that we had requested prior, that if we resubmit those, they're granting a waiver to the waiver, essentially, to allow some additional sites, you know, through this crisis. And if, I just want to reflect what's in those meals, what we're able to provide, a lot of people may have a lot of shelf-stable goods, but what we're providing are a lot of fruits and vegetables, so they'll see fresh fruits and vegetables, some things that they won't get otherwise, a lot of dairy products, fruit juice, we're really loading those up, and it's two meals, two lunches and two breakfasts in a bag, so it's actually, you know, a sizable portion that they're getting. And, you know, we're kind of front of the line for some of those fresh fruits and vegetables from USDA and the DOD initiative, so I just encourage people to do that. Once we see, you know, Monday was our first, our first feeding, Wednesday will be, or tomorrow will be the second, when we get a handle on where people are coming from in the county, then we can look to expand those sites, so...
And we served 96 on Monday, so...
And 96 out of the potential of our entire student population.
Yeah, this, this program, essentially, you can serve, when this program's put in place, you're, to provide a meal to every student 18 and under, now, of course, they don't need to be there to have it picked up. Nolan shows up and starts picking up my meals and my neighbor's meals, we know, you know, we're such a close-knit community, we know who belongs to who, I mean, we know how many meals we're handing out, so... And also, at that site, we also have some of our, our food boxes from the food pantry that has, it's roughly 15 or 20 pounds of shelf-stable goods, like pasta and breakfast cereal, cans of tuna, spaghetti sauce, cans of vegetables and fruit, and those are available for pickup at, we have some there, and of course, that continues at Mary Beth's in Dueshore.
And we just got a call, the Hills Grove Fire Hall is interested as well, so I've been in connection with them, and they are willing to be a drop-off place as well for the food pantry boxes. So, the word is getting out, and we want to feed as many people as possible, we want to get it out, as long as this continues, and the longer it continues, the less resources I believe are going to become available for families, so the more we can help, the more we will get the word out. And so, yes, Gabe, thank you for helping us getting the word out, and the food pantry, there's no restriction on that, that is not a school district, that was the food pantry reaching out, we made that connection, they asked how many boxes, we gave a number, it's to help our county. So, whatever we can do to get it out is all I need, is a point, and Forksville, if we can get somebody over that area that we can take the boxes to, and say, this is a delivery, a drop-off point, and someone is willing to be there when people want to pick up boxes, we'll be happy to do that, it's just, we were a contact place, so 20-pound boxes for families, that's all. There's no stipulation on those boxes at all. With the grab-and-go, that is state-regulated, and there are pretty specific regulations with that, but we made it.
And drop-offs again, Patty?
For the grab-and-go, they are Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and the D and D is what was approved, and that is from 11:00 to 12:30, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, and it's two meals, it's your breakfast and your lunch for two days, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and we will continue doing that until they say no. I know other districts are running into some concerns, their workers don't want to do it anymore because of the virus, so, but right now, we have very eager workers, they want to come out, they want to help, they want to feed our kids, so we will continue to do that as long as we have the workers and the helpers to do it. So, drive up and stay in your cars, our workers will come to you and place the bags in your cars, and, yes, we're very eager to help.
And the food pantry boxes?
I'm sorry, Kim?
And the food pantry boxes?
They, right now, are Mondays at Mary Beth's Westside Deli at 1:30 to 2:30, and then we have our school police officer, who is willing to take over, and he has been dropping them off at the terrace in Dueshore. For those, he has been making some deliveries, large deliveries at other places that have been requesting, so if you know of anybody that needs a large group of boxes dropped, just give us a call, we've been taking them down to D and D as well, and so if those families need for the week, it's a week-long box that we will give them as well. And now, we're going, we're still making the arrangements for over at Hills Grove, we just started that conversation, so as soon as we know, we will get the word out. But Hills Grove people can come to Dueshore, or just let us know, whatever you need, we'll get it to you.
I know I'm late to the game here. I had several bus contractors contact me saying that they would be willing to drop off food on their routes and let the kids pick them up. That puts the bus drivers to work, and it gives kids access to the food very easily. You might have already talked about this.
Nope, but that's in the agreement, if it gets, it got approved, it got approved, so that was one of the things we added into the agreement, is to use them for distribution of materials, such as possibly the Chromebooks, when they come in, the packets when they come put together, and the food.
Okay, good.
Perfect, thank you.
For a lot of those food deliveries, our approval is site-specific, so to deliver it by, you know, you have to know, it's, you know, that's, that's just the way our approval is, so...
Understood.
You know, so there's a lot of those things that other districts started doing that they're stopping, because they kind of jumped the gun, you know, and, and I want to make sure that we can, that we're eligible, we remain eligible, so that we maintain our supply of USDA commodities for this program, so I just have to make sure that we're doing everything, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
Thank you. But it's very nice to know that they're willing to do that. We'll use them in other capacities.
Good.
Nolan?
I have nothing.
Frank?
Nothing.
Jessica?
I'd just like to follow up on what Mrs. Cross said about the administrative team's hard work, and also acknowledge the hard work of the teachers that have really put a lot of effort into coming up with some learning activities during this time period, and are reaching out and making phone calls to families. I know that they're working really hard from their homes, and they're in a tough position as well, so I just wanted to recognize them. And then, I also just have, yeah, a question about the continuity of education plan, which I think is hopefully going to answer a lot of questions from parents, because I know that I've received a few questions about the expectations for doing work during this time. So, I saw that it says that the work will not be graded, it'll just be marked as complete or incomplete. So, if students are doing work that's paper, pencil, which I know that I've requested for my kindergartner, because it's so much easier than trying to do it on a phone book, how, how is that going to be collected, or is that something that you're kind of working through?
So, that is definitely something we're working through. If you heard this statement, first, the president made this statement, I believe it was on Sunday, that said we're going to the end of April for the social distancing, and then I believe it was yesterday that the governor said he continues to get questions on school closings, well, schools are closed indefinitely until it is safe. We all looked at each other, well, what does that mean? And we still, to this day, have not gotten any direction at all, so we're still going with, we're closed until the end of Easter break, okay? We have not gotten any direction yet on reading, retention, promotion, anything in that, in that area, so as a, as an IU, as a state, we're all trying to work through this together. So, as soon as we hear anything, I give, I will make those, we will get together as a team and come up with that, and then send that out to parents. So, when I say, just continue with what you're doing, meet with your children, or have your children go through those pages, and put them aside when they complete them, we will give further direction on whether we, on how we will collect them, and where we will collect them, as soon as we get that all worked out. We are getting, sometimes we get them daily, sometimes we get them hourly, sometimes it's a couple of days before we hear any directives. We're just trying to take this one step at a time, and then as soon as we get information, share that out as best as possible. Right now, safety is, I think, everybody's top priority, including the government's top priority, knowing that you have children at home, you want to keep them engaged in some type of learning, but also you want to keep them safe. So, the teachers want to make a connection, and I think that's important, keep them connected to school and to their work, but we're going to work through this, and we're going to figure out a plan, and, and everybody, superintendents are all trying to figure out, so we're all giving the same message, exactly IU-wise at least, and even statewide, so that we're all asking pretty much the same thing. Does that make sense?
It does, I just think about parents who are working, especially if they're working out of the home, and having to come home at night, and if they see this suggestive schedule with two and a half hours of activities, I think that puts a lot of stress, because parents want to do what's best for their kids, and we don't want their kids to fall behind, but they're also just trying to survive right now, so...
Totally understand.
I'm just hoping that there's some leniency in whatever is done is done, and the amount of time is flexible based on each family's situation, and I know that the teachers I've taught to, my children's teachers have expressed that to me, so I hope that's the message that is kind of going out throughout the district, that it's not...
It is, it is. Yes, there is no grading expectation, there is no, there are no requirements, there are no deadlines. If anybody is getting any of that, they need to report that to their building principals, but there isn't.
Well, thank you, thank you, that's all that I have.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anthony?
Again, great work, what's going on with trying to get information out, and I see the district now has a Facebook page. Whether it be good, good or bad, everybody seems to have a lot of time on their hands right now, so whatever we can do to get the message out with the food deliveries, what are schools doing in particular, that's fantastic, so, thank you.
Thank you, and you can give Lance a lot of credit on the Facebook page, I said you'll probably give me some extra points on this, Lance, because that is something I asked him we could work on, and he sped it up a little bit.
Well, given, like I said, everybody's got a lot more time on their hands, and I think now that they have more connectivity with what's going on through Facebook and social media, it's good that we get our message out there on what's going on, so it's more transparent.
Thank you, yeah, he's very good at it, I will say that, but he's going to be very busy the next couple of days because of the new platform with online, and the teachers requesting probably some extra help, and we've already gotten a couple of questions from students, so this poor guy is also taking grad courses that have not stopped, so he, we're going to try and help him a lot as well, so, yes, Mr. Mavis is doing wonders right now, and we're, we're here to help, so thank you for acknowledging that.
Tim?
I have nothing.
Okay. Becca?
Well, the only thing I can say is I want to thank the administration as well as the teachers, they're putting in an immense amount of work. I spoke with one elementary teacher yesterday, and she finished up her calls to her students about 7 o'clock last night, and had started early in the morning, so keeping in touch with all your kids can be a real problem.
I would like to thank the teachers, the administrators, and the board for putting in the time that's needed, this stressful time in our lives. I have had several teachers reach out to me for Noah, and it's very nice that they are, it's making things seem normal, and I think that will help the stress with the kids and the parents, if we kind of put a routine in place for them, and I appreciate everything everyone is doing. Meeting like this is not the most productive way to do things, but I appreciate that Lance has done this for us, that Doug's still working on the budget, that Patty's still coming back and...
back and forth with the administrators, and that the teachers are reaching out, not only the teachers, but, I mean, our bus contractors and our paraprofessionals and our support staff are also there. It's wonderful to see the district come together like this.
And they all have come together, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. Do we have any public input? Any more public input? Okay. Hearing none, I will make a motion to adjourn, and then we will go into executive session.
So move.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 At this time, we will go into a short executive session for contractual.